I'm going to have you call the Hockman zoning board, meeting to order. We will stand for home assignments on Tuesday.
My present is to reply to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
So tonight, we have a pre-op that is actually our second petition. I want to switch things and allow petition one to go first because it's going to go much quicker than petition one. Just kind of normal process that we do here at Hockman. If whoever's here for petition two, we're going to determine the completeness of an application and consider waivers to the petition for a special use permit filed by Ola Herman on behalf of himself, a mailing address of 3235 Selwood Avenue, Villages, Florida, 2216, for a property owned by himself in Kelly-Tallette located at 21 Fairview Avenue, Valerio Avenue, 02832, unidentified as a Sessors Flat 28, Lot 6 in B, residential zone, and RFRE, filed in accordance with section 8C and 10 of chapter 134 of the zoning ordinances of the town of Hockman as amended. Is Ola Herman there?
Yes.
Yes, hello. So we're going to go through our checklist. If you have any questions, we'll try and... And you'll just hear us through a lot of speaking right now. I'm just going to make sure everything's in order. I can do what you're reading for your head. So if you want to go, Joe's going to read up the checklist.
Item A, three copies of the site plan, prepared by and signed by a stamp. Professional engineer or professional land surveyor, get a scale of no less than one inch or 40 inches, about 40 feet through the shore. Name and address of property owners.
It's not a full file.
We're requesting that the application be set the plan as the site plan.
Okay, that's the top of it.
On that.
Do you have a packet there?
That's more of the top of it.
We have a large plant, it might be...
Maybe this one. It's looking to be Cecil. It looks like...
Yeah.
Yeah, Richard. Yeah, Richard. All right, so there's your... And then...
Your quicker out than me, you can read them all from... First one's name and address of the property owners.
Pretty similar, but Joe's the mom prior only if he's submitting this as a plan, and that would be malevolently.
That was the question. Well, actually, can I entertain a motion that we allow checklist item A to be... To use the site plan instead of a regular site plan?
Okay.
So there's a...
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. There we go, so now we can keep...
D, North Arrow, graphic scale, lot dimensions and area.
Hold question?
So D, North Arrow, graphic scale, lot dimensions and area. Seems to be lacking in some of those...
Yeah, well, that is the thing.
Yep. No area.
No area, I don't see much arrow anywhere.
I'd say for the application, which is no changes to be made, that it needs a... Yeah, change any of the structures, so this is what's there.
Let's go through what they just find almost efficient.
Yep.
So it's got the flat lot on it.
Yep.
Really deep on it. And a date later.
Graphic scale.
What's this?
Scale, graphic scale, let's see, it has rhythm. It uses scale, yeah. It uses scale.
That's close enough. Lot dimensions. It's got two-thirds of the lot dimensions.
And the block there was... And no area.
Yeah. All right, so...
I think it was a plan, because we had the application before us, and we noticed we, three or four years ago, that that plan had updated.
This shows, looks like the setbacks of the buildings.
Yeah, it's got some...
The setbacks of the...
Is that getting anything? I don't see, do you see zoning district getting removed?
Yeah. It's actually not a part of the property, too.
This one has it all. This one has it all.
That's good.
Yep.
Not very...
Yep, not...
Okay. You guys got the list though.
This might be the one that Dan's talking about.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
That's the area.
All right, so you got zoning district on it?
Yep.
You see it?
This is actually a butt of lot line.
Oh, this is the butt of lot?
Yeah. This one, just so... It does have... This piece of property is all my form here.
Donovan, Donovan, that's the ally.
Yep, I still think it was another plan, although it fills this. That's when they did the O S D, the one after.
Did they do their own site plan?
They thought they had one there, they thought they had a previous number of bedrooms at the time, too. This is a four bedroom, system right here, so they pumped it up, so...
They may have in a proposal.
Yeah.
Right, but never went through them.
I think collectively they had everything they needed.
Seeing it's pre-existing, I don't want to choose it.
Yeah, I choose the place, all right?
All right, moving on. Flat lot and zoning districts and setbacks, we said we had that.
Yep.
Existing and proposed structures and their relationship and distance of the lot properties, we did that. Existing bullet parking areas and bunkers. All existing. It's on the subject as well. Existing and proposed landscaping as it relates to the request. There's nothing, nothing changes. Existing streets, 911 addresses, well, and a subject system. List of names and addresses of all property owners within 200 feet of subject property. Got it? Last item A is any peculiar site conditions or features. That's all pre-existing, just a comment. So...
Yep.
Make a motion that checklist item A is complete.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, it's three copies of a separate map including all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property and or holdable property owners, and any of these with required notice under section 45-24-53 of RIGL. Does it have that, or do we go with the names?
Yep, we have the...
Would be... So the... The map 28, so it's all zeros.
Well, that is...
Yeah, so it's Pineville Cemetery. There are, you know...
You can always get an answer.
Get an answer, that's a good one. So they have map 28, Lot 18, which is Richard and the ones with Soderberg.
Yes.
Okay, oh, number 28, Lot 16A, which is Josh Gordon and Aaron Diaz.
Yes.
Um, and we have map 28, Lot 16B, which is the applicant, Ola Herman and Kelly Tallette. It's a subject property. Map 28, 16C is Roger Christen Christos.
Yep.
28, uh, Lot 19A, again, the same Roger, oh, actually, it's not 16, 19A. 16C.
Never read it, 19A is a title.
Yeah, I don't see 19A.
It's 16.
18A?
Yep. No, it's just 18. Kind of cuts through the palm there a little, yeah, through there. So you have 10, B, C, and 18. That's also, that's Roger Christos and Joseph Tallette. Yeah, it looks like, yeah, I think that C was the...
16C. Yes, yes, maybe it's a section, because I think, sorry, we have 18, that we got 18 seeds, the same people.
Oh, yeah, it's that little... That's just two, for just two. And that 25 Fairview Avenue, you got seven, Crisick Drive.
Is that a separate lot?
It's going to be a topless, and it's not shown up here, but it's...
Yeah.
Two of them named, two of the lots. Yeah, but we don't have that. That's got 18.
Yeah, hold on.
Yeah, but we already have it.
Yeah. No, I take that back, we got 16C, which is Roger Christen. We have also, because we're looking, we both take that glasses. We both... 16, no, right here, 19A and 19B. It's the one... More than... You got the same one. We don't have anything on that.
Well, there is a name, it's in touch, and we didn't...
Yeah. I have that next one, so I get 19A, that was a... Motion that checklist item D is complete?
So, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So checklist item... Checklist item C is a soil erosion and stormwater control plan, supporting calculations based standards approved by USDA Soil Conservation Services and Interference on Rain and Erosion Set and Control Hinder. There is a request to waive, that's a wave, checklist item C. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Checklist item D is a letter from a biologist indicating that there are no threat for wetlands on or in proximity of the site such that the applicant is required, either around the threat for wetlands or that is in those instances, so the application is regulated. There's also a request to waive. Checklist item D is there?
Single.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Checklist item E is location of existing subject system, where destruction requirements approved by RIDEM. We have, we have that, we'll talk about it in a little bit. We have an existing plan.
Checklist item C is complete, ready.
Complete. Make a motion, checklist item E is complete? So, second. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye. Checklist item F is a traffic study addressing the potential impact of the proposed activity. There's a request to waive that as well.
You should have that. It's not traffic back there.
So... Second. Second. Any discussion?
Aye.
Checklist item G, a separate site plan indicating existing and proposed topography. That's complete.
Uh, the estimate's a little late, because we actually have that.
No, they, they didn't ask for that.
No, not on G.
No, we haven't. Complete. Second, is that a motion? Okay, we got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
checklist item... Is H providing evidence of the property that proposed water supply has sufficient supply to support the proposed activity, and the drinking water quality, and they're asking to waive that as well. Seems to be private, though. I don't think it's really a waiver, it's an easy thing to tell, so it's existing. And it's all based on evidence, right? It's very professional, it's not going to change. I'm good with that. Make a motion, we... Just not waiting, just make a motion, let's complete.
Complete.
So make a motion that's complete. Second, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, Herman and Ola, you are, you should be all set. Um, we have to have, the neighbors need to be notified, certified now, and then we have to give the green cards back to... Who is? David June? Yes, um, give it back to this before the hearing, until we win. I can't, I'm going to... The March 19.
March 19?
Yes.
Okay. Any action I need to take on this, or do I need to take any action, or is this all silicone?
See me, I have a sample letter for the butter, it's on the mailing.
Excellent.
Correct.
It's all... Okay. I'll touch base with you. Okay, great, thank you so much. Thank you, it's good to meet you.
Okay. All right, so now we're going to move back to petition one, which is to determine the completeness of an application and consider waivers, and also move into the hearing, potentially move into the hearing for petition. For dimensional variance filed by Attorney George Mulvey on behalf of Hockman Industrial Park LLC, a mailing address of 401 Main Street, Ashway River, 02804, property owned by Hockman Industrial Park LLC, and located at 15th Avenue, Ashway River, 02804, unidentified as a Sessors Flat, Lot 12, a manufacturing zone, filed in accordance with section nine of chapter 134 of the zoning ordinances of the town of Hockman as amended. Along with... They met last month, and there was a question on...
There was a question about the wetlands application, which you should all have copies of. It was pending at that time, it was approved earlier this week by D E M.
So, before I jump the gun, Mr. York is going to refuse himself...
Pause.
Mr. Burri is going to step up here.
Yeah.
Was that the only thing we needed there?
It was, yeah.
So...
Hey, Ned. Mr. President.
The candidate's still a good option. She's in a motion to, uh, pre-op, please, if you can. Yes. So, second. So, any discussion? All in favor?
We're done.
So, the special use permit application is complete, so now we move on, so we have attorney's...
Aye, good evening.
Hello.
So can I ask for the record, is there any of our president's? No, but it's president.
Okay. And I'd like to make a motion that we grant dimensional variance. If I get a second, I'll explain more.
I think that going through all this effort to be here, we should really earn money. I'll wait for mine, but...
If we make a motion, it'll last our opinion. So we have the motion on the floor, we're going to wait like the second, to give it on its way. That's the way we... Yep, add there. Okay, that's fine.
Appreciate it, Ron.
Well, the motion does.
I very appreciate it, Mr. Chair. Uh, Stephen Sert, attorney, with the privilege here of representing Hockington Industrial Park. As the board members know, Hockton Industrial Park is a corporate resident area town, has been for some time. Uh, this application is for 3.9 feet in the back of the property to construct a add-on to the existing building to construct a facility for a company called L3. They were planning on being here at the last meeting, they are not here tonight. They have actually asked us to not get into too many of the detail. They do a lot of military contracting and government contracting, so I'm going to refer to their requests and not go into too much detail, nor do I know that much about what they're going to do in the building other than no impact on the offer for and the waters in the area. It will be clean manufacturing, as is currently done at the facility. Here over this evening is Sergio Terenzia, we'll give you a brief rundown of the site. We have a very new subject system, we have a new wetlands permit. We are, in my opinion, and the owner is here, one of the owners is here as well, one of the good corporate citizens in town. With that being said, if there are no questions or anything specific, Mr. Terenzia will leave the short presentation to the board.
Mr. Terenzia, will you raise your hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you share shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you said.
I do. Uh, for the record, Sergio Terenzia, with Terenzia and Associates, offices at 99 Mechanic Street, in Pawtucket, Connecticut. I am a licensed engineer in the state of Rhode Island, and I'm the owner, president, and principal of Terenzia and Associates. The plans that are in front of you tonight, a portion of them were prepared by my office, as well as Lance Raver, your... You'll see that these plans are, this is his overall survey plan in front of you. I'm just going to very briefly go over what the existing building is today, and then what they propose is, and just touch upon some of the issues such as set victory, some way of upgrading on the site. Uh, the existing conditions is a 41 acre developed parcel. It has a 195,000 square foot industrial slash commercial building with associated paved parking, drives, utilities, and landscaping. The site is abutted by wooded areas and the Ashway River to the northwest and south. And the surrounding areas predominantly undeveloped, with few residential and commercial properties. You may be aware of the solar facility that my client is pursuing and constructing. Phase one is, I believe, is complete, and I believe phase two is under construction still. We'll identify that the area, as I said, is, a majority of the site that is upland is developed and is surrounded by wetlands that are within jurisdiction of the Rhode Island D E M. We have a wetland delineation letter of findings from April 18, 2019, prepared by Ethan Tones, Inc. It's located in one of our reports, it will be submitted as part of the application. It identifies the river and swamp adjacent to the developed site. The wetland having a 50-foot perimeter associated with it, and the Ashway River has a couple of channels. I'm going to go to another map that shows the proposed development. Um, you can see on this aerial, you can see some of the channels outlined in the white of the Ashway River. You can see that this wetland has, there's the main channel, kind of close to the bottom of the map. You have the blue line, and then there's some other tributary channels that are closer to the development. Those rivers or riverbanks receive 200-foot delineated edge. So the proposal for the site is a 15,000 square foot addition to one of, you notice that the building is in a U shape. This is one of the southerly portion of the building, we're going to be tacking on 15,000 square feet. All the development is taking place in already disturbed areas. It's going to require us to bump out the driveway to get around the building. And in turn, we've designed, I believe it's a sand filter detention basin to... And in turn, we've designed, I believe it's a sand filter detention basin to accommodate the stormwater of the increased impervious area. I will note also that this portion of this site is within a flood hazard area, and we delineated under previous application, the flood elevation. It is the practice and regulatory requirement of DEM that if you fill any portion of the flood plain, that you have to have compensation in other portions of the site, and that has been accommodated. I believe Attorney Stevens mentioned at the beginning of this presentation that this building has improved and very, actually newly constructed onsite wastewater treatment system. This addition does not represent, although we don't know specifically what's going on, as Attorney Stevens mentioned, will not represent any increase in employees to the facility. It's my understanding that this addition will just upfacilitate for storage space and other operations, they're just upfront space, but does not represent any increase in waste water flow. In addition to that, we, to the OWTS, onsite wastewater treatment approval and conformance, which is actually in the front and to the side of the building, it's not shown in this location, we also have a wetlands permit from the Rhode Island DEM Office of Water Resources Wetlands Section that we just received, I believe it was within last week or so. All the appropriate stormwater reports documenting that we have appropriately handled, admitted in both peak discharges from the site, as well as water quality, to make sure that there won't be any adverse effect to the adjacent wetlands. Those are the highlights of my presentation, I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Very briefly, sir, about how far away are we from the objecting of butter?
Uh, the objecting of butters, the structure itself is about 800 feet away.
Now, to your understanding, that's why we're here today, otherwise it's sort of a counter, it's a modification, correct?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
Nothing further for the board, if any questions?
Sergio, is the new septic you designed big enough to handle more employees? If so, did it end up in that hot tub room?
I forget the actual, I don't have it with me, I can look it up if it's a critical thing that you need, but I forget how many gallons per day which represents a certain number of employees, I'd have to get that number for you. But I believe we, when we designed the new septic system, it was a repair from an older system, which had failed or was in a failing state, so Ray, you know, engaged me and wanted to, pretty much to design a state-of-the-art system. The type of system that we have installed there, I can say without the numbers in front of me, it's called a septic tech. It's not just a conventional septic tank to a leach field, it actually has pre-treatment, and it's very meticulously monitored. American engineering, Dan Cotta and Matt Cotta, I think they presented in front of your board before, they're the ones that maintain the system, and they've been working with the operational managers and making sure that it's functioning up to the standards, and it's not gonna get into a place where it's gonna need another repair. So I can tell you, it's a state-of-the-art, it's not just a simple tank to leach field, it's got a lot of mechanical and pre-treatment extra. We oversized tanks to accommodate, so I'm fairly confident that it can handle what the current is, and there is a, you know, a design flow that accommodates, that would translate to a number of employees.
And speaking with the owner, it tells me that the system is currently using about half of the capacity, or that the factory is using about half the capacity of the system. So it's more than enough, it's more than robust enough to take additional employees, even on a temporary basis, should any of the people in the facility need to bring on temporary staff or to expand in future, which is always a good thing to have.
Does that mean to maintenance contract that it has perpetual?
I believe it is.
Yeah, I don't believe, I think anything with pre-treatment, you have to have an operation and maintenance contract signed, I believe it's recorded on land evidence records as well, so that will happen in perpetuity. And because it is such a technical type of system, it really requires it, you know, that you wanna have, you need some individuals to be able to operate and maintain it.
It's a pretty extensive maintenance contract, it's far greater than what we normally see on a residential system. Do they choose to like to have it monitored?
Um, yes, it's actually monitored daily by a phone system. So, in all the things that Hopkin Industrial Park does, they did it the right way, and their goal is to have it work without any problems, to maintain it, and this is a relatively new facility that's...
Since this was started, since the system went live, have they had any failures before?
Um, no, there hasn't been any failures to date. They've had some tweaking to do to it, but it's been functioning much, much better than the previous system, but it's functioning within its intended design.
So this addition, I believe you already stated it for the record, I just wanna recertify the wagons, this is gonna be strictly storage?
I don't know exactly what it's gonna be used for, but I have been informed that it does, it will not decrease in the amount of wastewater by virtue of the fact of increasing employees. This is not space for, to hire more people, I think it's more for to house equipment and storage, correct?
Oh, like, do you anticipate any additional lighting, is there gonna be dark sky compliant?
Oh, on the building, on the outside of the building?
Yes, it is getting full.
Yeah, well, certainly be dark sky compliant.
In terms of that neighbor that kind of had a problem during the precipitation of eight or a feet.
It's 800 feet away, and any and all lights can be directed down intentionally away from the neighbors.
Oh, no, I see, I realize, I'm not sure what we're doing.
Other than the occasional truck or employee vehicles circling the building?
Someone's there right now.
Yeah, it's, again, clean manufacturing that I use during normal business hours.
What's the landscape like towards the...
Uh, I'm gonna, Sergio, I actually have some photographs that I can show you of the lands, the nature of the land between the two houses. I was uncomfortable by saying, it's almost like a fairy tale, the most ironic, it's over two rivers and through the woods, 800 feet before we get to the butter's house, which we have on a back plan.
So do you have, do you have any, do you have any understanding why somebody raised an objection to the project?
No, and that is one of the things that I know has frustrated the leadership of Hopkin Industrial Park. Normally, it resonates first at the initial meeting, and speaking with your zoning official, it's just a general objection, there was nothing specific stated regarding lighting or any of those things, and expected any motion. And if there were, I'm quite confident that Hopkin Industrial Park would address any reasonable concern that they have.
The reason for my septic question was, just for background, we're approving a building, not a tenant.
Correct.
If that tenant moves out tomorrow, Ray's gonna have somebody else in there.
And that's why we have a broken system.
That's what we'd hope anyway.
I know he would, you know that.
So he answered the question there, it's only using half capacity now, so we're fine.
So, just for the record, it's a 4,950 gallon per day system, the capacity, and that remains in perpetuity unless it changes to like something that requires additional pre-treatment, like a restaurant or something like that, but it's very unlike that.
And the fact that you're only using half capacity as it is, the chances of getting to full capacity are pretty slim.
So, just to recertify, you brought up the map with topography and it shows some of the vegetation and whatnot.
So, just for reference purposes, this is the abutting property that had the complaint. There's the addition and the distance to that structure through this wetland and wooded area is just over 800 feet. And so what we did, just to make sure that this wasn't going to be visible, is that there were photos taken, and you may wanna come up and take a closer look from the roof of the existing structure, and the addition is gonna be, you can see the edge of the pavement here, is going in this direction, but you have to look very closely, granted, this is, this is winter, you can see like a silhouette of a house. Once this is all, you know, six months, seven months out of the year, this is gonna be filled in with leaf, and you're not gonna be able to see that house. This was taken recently, in the dead of the winter, although it's been, it doesn't feel like winter, the leaves are all down, and you look, you can barely see the silhouette of the house through those trees.
And even though the structure is 100 by 150, it's like it's almost running parallel to this house, the butter's house, it's not like you're really coming 100 feet close here, I'm just kinda on the same mark.
No, so the pictures you can see we have were taken, one, two, three, four, like you said, if you wanna come up and take a better look, but Alan was one of the managers, he was on the roof, took these photos, and took them in the general direction of that house.
You're correct on the starting, we kind of, our building continues to run parallel across the base of his house, we're not going at his house.
We're not going closer.
And that's already cleared, that piece of property is already cleared.
Yes, it's disturbed area, it's been disturbed for quite some time, it's currently mowed.
You're not, you're not caring anymore, we're gonna do that?
No.
No, what's there now is the driveway that runs around the building, and then you can see the grass actually in this photo here beyond it, so we're just pushing out where the existing grass is, where that pavement will be, the building where the pavement is onto the grass a little bit, and pavement will be further up.
Has there been any issues with the industrial park, with anyone working outside of the building itself? Noise complaints or anything?
To the best of my knowledge, it's never been the police have filed a singular noise complaint, I don't think the police have ever been calmed down or down on the concrete. At any time I come in there, it's at least been actively kept, well maintained, mowed.
The zoning official also stated that she hasn't had any complaints about noise or activities outside of the building or inside of it, but it's been fine, it's been good neighbors, so...
I've been down there personally hundreds of times, you can't hear anything outside the building from what's going on inside here.
Just for the record, I mean, how close is that to interstate 95?
Right at the end of the gray lane there is interstate 95.
I'm looking for a distance. Might not have run.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's gonna pop right out here. So right on the other side of the solar farm is where the solar field is, right 95 minutes.
So from the...
So, on the scale? Yeah, you're probably talking close to 1,000 feet.
About 1,000. Would you say it's just a little bit more than the property setback from the complaint?
Correct.
Over 800 feet from the complaint.
And that, with our own knowledge, and I think you're gonna hear the highway a lot more than you can hear the neighbors. Not that it's a noise issue to begin with, but I mean...
I'm a little bit uncomfortable trying to speculate what the objective is raising the issue with, and since they're not here pressing, I think we dispense with the discussion of the objection, move on with the rest of the topic. I confer. Thank you, Pat, for the beginning. End of case by motion.
So, I'll conclude very briefly, I believe we meet the requirements of your statute, specifically chapter 134, it's the least amount that is required or to be able to continue to spend this property and to use it to its full potential, that the applicant didn't create the size of the lot, and the applicant is looking forward to continue to be a good corporate citizen, and to employ as many people as possible here in town in both indirectly and directly on this facility.
Would I let me say, just to follow our procedural protocol, those normal businesses, unless I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through our... Don't, yeah, actually, do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak on that?
I would just like to say, I live one mile from exit 93.
State name for the record?
Barbara Capalbo, Hopkin, Rhode Island, Ashway, Rhode Island. I live one mile from the highway, and we can definitely hear the noise, we can hear it in our house when the wind is shut, when we can set it on porch, we can hear it, and that's where it is. And it's quiet, it's relatively quiet, and we have always been a great neighbor, I live within a quarter mile of his building.
Anybody else like to speak? Oh, so guys, can I, one of you entertain a motion that the zoning board finds that hardship and what's the absence seeks relief is due to, you mean, characteristics of the subject land or structure, not the general characteristics of the surrounding area, is not due to the physical or economic visibility of the applicant? Ain't that his motion? So, maybe a second, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Also, can I entertain a motion that the zoning board finds that hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant, does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize that your finding is a name? So, maybe a second, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I entertain a motion that the zoning board finds that granting the requested variance that it will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan on which this ordinance is based? So, maybe a second, second?
And Mr. Chairman, you closed the public hearing, correct?
Close the public hearing.
Thank you. I get a second?
Second.
So can I entertain a motion that the zoning board finds that granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan on which this ordinance is based? So, please, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I entertain a motion that the board finds that relief to be granted is necessary? So, move it, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Also, can I entertain a motion that the zoning board finds that the subject parcel or structure might give any benefit to the use of this required component or provisions of the zoning ordinance? So, move it, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, that was a mispronounced, I'm sorry. That one doesn't apply, I'm sorry, that was for a mispronounced. So, can I entertain a motion that the zoning board finds that hardship that would be suffered by the owner of the subject property, the dimensional variance is not going to, shall move to more than one dimensional. So, move it, this is the, sorry, second, any discussion? All in favor? So, now, can I entertain a motion based on the foregoing that the zoning board will approve this dimensional variance? So, move it, second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You have the variance, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for the very much, Chairman, Mr. Board. Good job, sir, you're proud of that. This is very helpful. I have you in. Good.
Better do everything around to the east.
So guys, can I entertain a motion that the zoning board has amended the annual 16 to 12 ago? So, move it, second, all in favor? Make a motion, Mr. Chair? Do we have, um...
So Scott, you know, something else today, and he goes, you go, what's happening with that? Such and such. He goes, well, just to see him, see him, talk to him about... He got water, it's on water edge in the street.